Good evening. The May 21st, 2024 meeting of the Spack and Kill Union Free School District Board of Education. The board will take a vote to enter into executive session for the purpose of discussing matters pertaining to the superintendent's evaluation. It is anticipated the board will resume public session at approximately 7:30 PM. I have a motion to enter into executive session. Do I have a second?
Second.
Sasha. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes 5-0. Good evening and welcome back to the May 21st, 2024 meeting of the Spack and Kill Union Free School District Board of Education. Please rise and...
...tithes United States of America and the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item 4.01, public comments on consent agenda items. Public comment on consent agenda items. Any board questions or comments on consent agenda items?
I'd like to pull 10.03 and 10.04 for discussion.
Okay. That goes. Do you want to present any questions or comments you have right now then? So you can get them addressed?
Yeah, I'm interested in what 10.03 is, the risk strategies proposed. Well, I did read over the PDF of it, but I was just looking for some more information on what that is.
That is, we hired that outside agency to do a calculation that would be used in our financial audit. Basically, what they're going to do is give an estimate of what the district's liability would be if we had to provide post-departement benefits to our entire staff. If something catastrophic were to happen and we had to do that, if they give that number, that number, when you see the financial audit, it's a very big number, but it doesn't mean that we would have to write a check for hundreds of millions of dollars. It's just an estimate of something catastrophic that happened.
And that's, it said that's something that's required by the governor?
It is required because it has to be a part of our financial audit.
Okay, and we do it every year?
And we do it every year. And we use the same company, which is why I kind of put Aquarius in there, that's what they used to make.
Great, thank you. For 10.04, the New Spastic Athletic Bid Awards, just looking to see what that is or what the money is spent on, and had a whole bunch of different vendors and a whole bunch of different...
What happens is our director of athletics puts together a list of supplies and equipment and uniforms and all kinds of things that he would need that year, and we send out that list to different vendors, and we come back and take a look at the vendors, and we really award those bids on an I-to-I basis, which is why you see several vendors being awarded bids.
Next every year too. Okay, thank you.
Anybody else have any questions or comments? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to vote on the consent agenda without 10.03 and 10.04. Is there a motion?
Motion.
I think that was Sasha. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye, aye.
Aye, passes 5-0. And then I'll take a motion to approve 10.03 and 10.04.
Make a motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, passes 5-0. Okay, that brings us to item 12.01, district goals. Dr. Fany Elias, this is you.
All right. Does it click or does it work? So back in, I believe it was September, I did a presentation on the goals for the school year. We had talked about it at our board retreat, and we presented it. I used some of the same slides, but updated them so the look would be very similar. We had a goal really to look at, you know, some of our strategic plans and some of the plans we have specifically are, we wanted to update our financial plan, and we wanted to update our five-year facilities plan. And those have gone as planned. If you take a look there, there's some bullets. I'm not going to read them all, but maybe I'll highlight some. The five-years plan is still going. We're working with our architect on that, and that's something that we have to do every five years, and this is time for, it kind of fit with everything. It fit with updating our financial plan and updating our facilities plan. And then this is the kind of the big plan which we're planning for. This is the electric bus. We've been doing a lot on the electric bus. Most recently, we went to a roundtable sponsored by a assembly member, D.D. Barrett. And then I think a couple days later, Val and I met with seller Rob Rollison, talked to him about some of our concerns. We did feel that, you know, our elected officials do, I think, now understand the financial strain this will have on districts. However, the law is still, the law, and it's still coming, so we are preparing as if, and we are currently going through an infrastructure kind of needs with our architect to tell us what we got to do, and if this is feasible. Update the strategic plan. So we've talked about the three-prong approach, I think during the summer. The three prongs are really instruction, capacity building, and community building. Keep the look as it, you know, instruction is for the students, capacity building is for the educators, and community building is for the community. I feel these, these three prongs or whatever, these three categories really capture what a school district, you know, wants to do. We really want, you know, we want to have items focused for instruction and students, items focused for our teachers and educators, and items focused for the community. And on here, you could see some things that are down there. Instruction wise, the big one, we're really going to deal with, this is very big. The bullet is actually a little bigger on there. I don't think that was by design, but maybe it was. The Blue Ribbon Commission, that's going to be a big part of what schools look like. I believe I showed the board an article that really talked about this June, giving us more information about what is in it. And that eventually, a timeline will come out. I do not anticipate that timeline coming out in June, but I do anticipate maybe learning what State Ed is saying we are going to have to do, which is a matter of play. So that's going to be a big piece of how we move forward as a district. Capacity building, you know, has been great. We continue with our professional development and our mentoring. And then, big thing with the community is we're coming up on our 160th, you know, anniversary, which, think about it, it's a long time, right? I think a lot of people don't realize that Spack and Kill has been in existence since 1865, so we're going to, you know, bring the community together with that. So here's another way of looking at the three-prong, you know, instruction, capacity building, community building. If you notice, the arrows kind of go back and forth because everything is intertwined. You know, you could probably even say some things under one could possibly be on the other, but this is just a way of organizing it so that we're able to focus on what we need to do. So if you look under the instruction one, you see a lot of the things we've talked about, the Blue Ribbon Commission, you know, there's some examples, that was in the Blue Ribbon. And meet students where they are, you hear me say that. And a lot of things we've done to do that is, you know, our positivity project, our avid DEI mentoring programs. Capacity building, I think one of the big things on there is going to be really looking at AI and its effect on teaching and learning. And also, you know, we're doing a lot, a lot of work with our ELA and Science of Reading to really make sure we are hitting the mark there, and we're going to continue to work with Dr. Ryder. And then over community building, you know, really look to continue doing what we're doing to have community outreach, to continue the newsletter. I think the newsletter is very unique in this area, and in most, most districts have a newsletter that's maybe quarterly, maybe to put four out, you know. I think that is really a key to our cohesiveness, is that we are able to, you know, put that out weekly, you know, every once in a while, you know, every week or week. That is more special than people think because it really doesn't happen in other places that way. And then continue with the other items on there. So, I kind of went on a, this is how I framed what we're doing to different constituent groups, and I went on kind of a mission to talk to different groups to kind of hear what they had to say about Spack and Kill. So in 2019, the board of retreats set out to examine and rethink graduation requirements in New York State, create the Blue Ribbon Commission. They, this past November, they had 12 recommendations. I really feel AI is changing what's going on in education, and we're also preparing to celebrate our 160th year, so I kind of look at it as that we're at a crossroads. I think we're at a transformational time in education. It's actually exciting. Like, we're at a point where I think we'll look back 10, 15 years from now and be like that one. This was a pivotal time in education, between those three things and many others. So I set out with three questions. I wanted to keep it simple, but I wanted to gain knowledge. So the three questions were, what aspects of our school community are well-established and valued? What is emergent in our school community that we want to nurture and grow? And as we embark on the future, what do you envision as Spack and Kill's strengths innovation 10 years from now? Each of those questions are unique where it could kind of tell us, you know, what you value, what's going well, what are we doing, what we need to do more of, and what do you want to see us do in order to meet educational demands, you know, 10 years from now? So, different groups I spoke with. So, one group was from parents. I went to PTA meetings, and this is what I learned. I won't read it all, but you can see I never revalued, tightened the community, teacher-student ratio and teacher-student relationships, high standard of education, high level of communication, parent involvement, diversity at the school help. What do we want to keep doing? Keep growing, keep building relationships, keep adapting to the kids, meeting them where they are, literary initiatives like OG training, pre-K initiative, P2, DEI, to name a few. Looking ahead, 10 years from now, develop avenues for STEM and trades, teach life skills, more skills-based versus fact-based, more work-study experiences. We've also learned that, that probably will come from the Blue Ribbon. Hands-on learning, learning outside the classroom, promote the civics seal, civics learning and engagement on community involvement, which we're doing a very nice job in, you know, thanks to Rory and others. And then I met with the students, I met with the seniors, went into a few classrooms. It was, honestly, really fun. Our seniors are very astute, enjoy talking with them. So, what did they value? High standards, culture of respect, there's a lot of trust, teacher-student relationships, diversity, opportunities. There is a club for everything. It's not hard, it's not, it's hard not to fit in. Yeah, that was created here, something for everyone. They really liked the mentor program for themselves because they were the mentors, and they really got a lot of value out of that. Music program, computer science program, science research really resonated. Looking ahead, emphasize financial literacy. Again, common theme, you know, what we've learned from Blue Ribbon. Have more classes based on what you do in the real world, offer work-study internships. We've seen that, and they also talk a little about foreign language. Also met with the leadership committee. This was people in-house. This was, you know, different, from all different levels, from teachers to teaching assistants to technology, to principals, and very similar. You've probably seen a lot of common themes through all this, supportive community, neighborhood and atmosphere, and sense of pride in the community, inclusivity, academic vigor, staff retention. We try to find the best people to hire and feel that we want to settle for less. It has been something that we've definitely focused on, you know, since I've been here, and even before. What to keep focusing on, social-emotional skills, counter-trad programs like P2, school-wide connections, meeting students where they are or where they're at, you know, very similar to what we've been saying here. The teaching mentoring program, right? We want not only hire really good, but we want to train our teachers to be even, even better. Looking ahead, improve reading and early literacy. I think we are taking a look at that with a lot of the initiatives we have at the elementary level. Continue to better ourselves through staff offerings and trainings. Flexible in the spirit of continuous improvement and continue to pivot and stay current with AI, as that transforms what's happening. Also, I went just administrators. And these were some of the items that they had mentioned, which was right at school's beginning, summertime to begin. Look at the Blue Ribbon Commission, focus on a growth mindset, never stop learning, process-oriented versus outcome-oriented, one district, multiple paths to excellence. So, I think we really felt we focus on the process, focus on doing the right things, and then good things will happen, as opposed to just trying to look at numbers. Review electives and criteria to make sure that we're keeping pace with changes. Continue to use iReady, that's another big thing we've been doing. Continue using phonics-based instruction OG in the classroom. We were kind of ahead of the game on that. And then there's some others down there, you see P2, avid, you know, a lot of things seem to be repeated throughout, which was a nice thing, right? We met with, you know, we consider this four different groups, but, you know, it just shows how cohesive we are because we really aren't four different groups, we really weren't. Capacity building, give teachers tools to strengthen relationships with students, build the capacity through trainings, continue, you know, having a good hiring process. Community building, work with local businesses or colleges, you know, we had our avid kids go to colleges and stuff, you know, really trying to show them what's going on in the world. Explore report card updates and the concept of tri-semesters. That's something the board should be aware of on the elementary level only. There's a lot of benefit to having tri-semesters instead of quarters, so there's a team looking at that. Nothing for next year, obviously, just stuff to look at. And we'll probably have more conversation about that as the team comes back with their beliefs on it. And then some other items down there on the community building. So meet students where they are, you know, it's a little bit of an unofficial mantra for us. If we go back to the original presentation, these are some of the items that we're focused on, so I just want to report here a little bit. So we continued our DEI committees, and continue to work on the four categories that was sponsored by, you know, the State Ed DEI. We really focus on our avid program, advancement via individual determination. So we created a seventh grade cohort this year, and continued our eighth grade cohort. So next year, eighth will go to ninth, seventh will go to eighth, and then another seventh will exist, so it'll be three years next year. And they did some, some nice things. They went to different colleges to really expose them to our area. We continue to enhance the positivity project. We created a high school positivity club, which went pretty well. If you look at the picture on the left, that was, that's at the high school, you know, one of the things they did. The mural, I think we've seen a video on the mural at Nassau that has the P2 values. And we are going to, we already presented at a state conference on P2, and over the summer, we're going to present at a national conference on P2, some of the principals and myself, so that's, that's kind of neat. And we're going to continue to work with Dr. Ryder. She has, you know, been very helpful in helping us do some of these transformative projects. And I think the final slide here is to continue to develop a PK program. Eight additional seats are offered for next school year. Second class to graduate already, that's crazy. We already now have two years of it. Pre-K parents' gardens added to the district newsletter, so they get all our course benefits accounted, are already ready to go for kindergarten through this. And the collaboration between the pre-K and kindergarten teachers have been awesome. They have to talk a lot, they go over, Johnny, you can jump in if you want. I've been to a few celebrations at pre-K, which was kind of nice. But because we have it in one place, one location, it's very, it's been very beneficial for, for our community. Just went through a lot. This is a lot to absorb, so this might, you might have questions on this at another time or possibly a board retreat, but I wanted to give an update, you know, it's kind of the time, it's kind of the perfect time, right? I thought you'd go, you know, end of, end of, end of May, to kind of discuss, you know, kind of what happened this year and then where we're looking to, to move forward for next year. Will we use the summer to kind of, you know, take a look at all this and kind of frame it just, it's kind of framed, but we will frame it more precisely, you know, to get ready for next school year? Any questions?
Just a quick question about the electric buses issue. You touched on this before, but conversations that you've had with little politicians, I assume that they've been having those kinds of conversations with other districts, and I know that you've been talking with other districts as well, so, I mean, I think that's the sense I'm getting of things, is that it's a, it's kind of a collaborative effort here. Everyone has these concerns, yeah.
No matter your size, so, you know, the number of our buses compared to maybe a Lopperidge or Arlington, you know, doesn't compare, but the impact is there no matter your size.
Right.
I would even say the impact might be even more difficult on district staff, stretch a little further in our world, where, you know, maybe the battery lifetime isn't as long as it, as it could be. So, we are definitely doing it together. At our last superintendent meeting, we, we all kind of spoke again about it. When we went to the D.D. Barrett roundtable, we were all there too, voicing our opinion. I think everyone knows it's going to be very difficult to meet the timeframe given, and a lot of people have said, we understand that, but it hasn't changed. So, it's one of those things, you kind of sleep with one eye open because, you know, it seems like people understand it's not going to be able to be, happen, but nothing has changed. What we learned at the roundtable, and Val to jump into, is that I don't think manufacturers are going to have enough buses for, if everyone did this at this timeframe, like, it's just not going to be able to produce that amount. I think infrastructure is going to be tough at every district. I think electrical grids and power supply are going to be different, difficult. The concept makes sense, right? Let's have our school buses, you know, be, be green and not blue. That makes sense, I just don't know if we're, I don't mean Spack and Kill, where as a community, society, New York State is able to, to do that. I'll jump in on that, I know you were passionate the other day also.
Passionate, and there are some business officials who are extremely vocal about the impracticality of the timeline, and that's our biggest issue. We're not saying that we don't believe in it, we just don't believe that any district can completely replace their entire fleet, believe us. That's just not the way it's historically been done. And the budget impact on trying to do that is significant.
So is the sense that it's, is there a shared sense that this is an aspirational goal? As you say, practically, you know, nothing's changed yet, but, you know, it stands to reason that if they're hearing this collectively from really all the districts in the area, there's got to be at some point a recognition that this is a goal, and there's going to have to be some modification of how we get to that goal. But what's encouraging, I think, for me anyway, is to know that, that the districts are collaborating in a sense, and if there are solutions that start to emerge over the next several years, there'll be shared information about those solutions. I mean, I think that's what this seems to augur, you know, for me. So, so that's a hopeful spin perhaps. But, but yeah, I mean, that's at least how I understand it, is this is a goal, this is an aspiration.
It appears to be aspiration.
Let's figure out how.
But each passing day, the aspirational change to, to, you know...
Tangible.
You know, but we, we're, we're doing it, you know? We're, we're having our, you know, infrastructure looked at, and, you know, we're definitely taking the steps to move forward, but I don't know if we or anyone in our campaign will be able to do it in the timeframe.
Yeah, I think one of the things that may drive home the obstacles that we're facing is we are now mandated to report every year on what steps we are taking to meet this initiative. So I think once they see that districts are not making significant headway from year to year, then they be forced to readjust their budget.
Yeah. Not because they're not trying to make headway, but because it's impractical.
I mean, we'll show we're doing product. I don't think, I don't think there'll be enough product out there for people to buy if they could buy. That's just number one. It's like, it's like the Tickle Me Yum All though. Remember that? Are we two, you guys too young for that?
No, I remember.
Did you get one, Sasha?
No.
We have a feasibility study being done to see, like, if we're able to, what we've been trying to do is, we have a company coming in to see what we can do, what is going to cost us.
We have a company of engineers who's going to look at our fleet and look at our physical plan, look at grid capacity from Central Lexington to see what we can put where.
I think I asked for it, I just can't remember what the answer was. What's the timeline on them projecting to those third results?
I would say probably in the fall, because we just completed the proposal to do all of that and secured grant funding to take care of it. So they're going to come out and actually look at our bus fleet, they're going to look at each of our buildings to see if we can't put them all in one place, where can we put them?
Do they also look at the bus company that we currently use, see if it's even going to be feasible for them to get everything that they need to continue doing what they're doing for us?
They have not done that piece.
That's not part of their...
Because if that bus company turns around and says we don't have enough buses to do that, would we then need to turn around and buy extra buses because they don't have the ability?
We are, we, we talk with our, you know, with our bus company, and, you know, they're, they're saying, they're meeting those demands. It's interesting whether bus companies have to follow the same protocol, because they're not a district. So there's a lot of questions still out there.
How about there was something in there saying that even if we have some outside company doing it, that, you know, there's...
There has been talk of contractors having to do this, contractors actually being available or able to apply for some of the grant money out there. So I think if they, basically if they don't supply the buses, yeah, this is...
I like the superintendent's aspect of it when you have these meetings. Has there been any, like, you know, loopholes as far as going to Washington DC? Are you still going to have to have an electric bus take them all the way down to DC because they're transporting students? Or are you allowed to now use a gas bus?
What a lot of have is, your entire fleet doesn't have to change right away, so in essence, when you start to change, you'll still have diesel buses.
I'm just saying, we don't even use our own buses.
No, we just try.
But if you're talking a, a long trip to Sullivan West or something, you know, we have a long sports trip, I think we had our softball team little yesterday or two days ago. You know, when we start this process, we'll, we'll still have diesel buses for a number of years as we turn over into that, and hopefully by the end of that cycle, the battery life is different. So immediately, and immediately, we're... So immediately, in the immediacy, I think we're okay with that kind of stuff.
I don't mention on what that aim is though, as far as what they're trying to propose right now at the, you know, the final.
Zero emission.
Zero emission.
Zero emission by twenty.
Twenty thirty-five.
Twenty thirty-five.
Right, so when it comes to like a charter bus, there's probably no charter buses going from here.
I don't know that. I don't, I don't know that.
Right, that's not what I've been discussing.
I think everything that we use on a day-to-day basis, especially that we own, would have to be zero emission.
I don't know if it's, if it's the charter buses or the.
We don't have to do that. We're just really looking at anything controlled by S U B. And S U B controls our fleet and then by the contractor.
Good questions.
I'll next. Interestingly enough, I've seen a lot of commercials lately for propane buses, but I'm supposing that they're not zero emission. And then there's hydrogen buses as well, so.
Those seem to be.
The cheapest product is water, isn't it?
There's a local school district that converted their diesels to propane. They're still in the process of doing that. Now they're going to have to do another.
I think the other thing I would just mention about, and an update on that financial plan, is that, you know, the town of Poughkeepsie had a pretty drastic administration change in its town board. And, and we have to keep our eye on the IBM payment and bill of taxes, which is up very soon. So, we'd like to make sure that we have some representation of what we want out of that as well, as opposed to the town negotiating on our behalf.
Absolutely. We meet with them yearly, so we'll be with them during the summertime. We're glad I do that again.
Anyone else? Okay, that brings us to thirteen point zero one, public comment on non-agenda items. Any public comment?
You guys smiled exactly.
Thirteen point zero two is board correspondence. We did receive some emails on a personnel issue that is being addressed by the administration. And fourteen point zero one, comments from the board. Comments from the board?
Just that we're looking forward to going down and getting results of the vote. Thank you to everyone who, who has voted. Still some time, ten minutes, so if you haven't voted yet, come on out and vote.
It just went to nine.
Did it? Eight fifty-one.
Well, well said.
Thank you for everyone who's voting.
Agreed. Alright, with that, that brings us to fourteen point zero two, any comments from our superintendent?
No, just looking forward to going out to the vote. I, you know, I want to thank everyone who voted, and you know, it was a beautiful day today, so hopefully, people came out to vote, and we'll have some nice results, and continue doing this great work. Thank you.
That's it. Okay, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
We're on second. All in favor?
Okay.
Thank you. We'll see you next time.